Welcome, everyone, to the City of Western Miami Commission Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 20th at 7:30 PM. I know the clerk has made mention, I just want to be sure everyone knows, if you wish to speak on any agenda item this evening, you need to fill out a speaker's card, which I believe is available there, and present that to the city clerk, please, and thank you. Okay, Mr. Penna, for the invocation, please rise.
Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that you, we seek you for advice, let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act as based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, Lord, we place this meeting in your hands, we place our hearts and our minds in your hands, so that you may direct us. Amen. Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Commissioner Blanis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Rondo Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Present.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón is excused this evening. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for November 6, 2019, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Anyone wish to speak on anything except the public hearing? Any other item? No? Next item.
No, Madam Mayor. Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In lieu of the fact that you have a public hearing this evening advertised for 7:30, I think it's best that we defer our report, my, the report from my office until later on in the agenda.
Very well.
Unless you, unless you want to hear it.
No, no, very well. In that case, let's defer six, seven, and eight, report the city manager, report the city attorney, report the city engineer, and nine committed reports, and report of the mayor. Let's leave all those until after the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is that, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and I will buy to request withdrawal of item 11E. Is there a report by city engineers on citywide traffic study?
Withdrawn.
May I ask the clerk-mayor to include this for a presentation at the January 15, 2020 meeting, nineteen, I mean, 2020 meeting?
Very well, Madam Clerk, as instructive. Yes?
How would you like me to, yes, duly noted, what item would you like to hear? Public hearing 11?
Let's go right into...
Ten A?
Yes, okay, we can, we can read A, let's, let's go, let's read A.
Okay, item 10, unfinished business, item 10A, nomination of two alternate members to the code enforcement board, and members of the recreation advisory board.
Does anyone have anything on item A?
I don't have anyone at this moment.
Madam Clerk, I am working on that, so I, I will have some nominations for you by the next meeting.
We'll keep it on the agenda.
Working on it also.
Okay, well, perfect.
Good.
So by the next meeting, thank you.
Yes.
So carry it over for the next one.
Okay, on item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a public hearing, property address 6400 Southwest A Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Special use permit, 2019-002, applicant Gilberto and Teresa Uribe, Banyan Community Health Center, Inc., 3910 West Laggler, Miami, Florida, 32144. Applicant requests special use permit for the property at 6400 Southwest A Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. The property at 6400 Southwest A Street, total 149.11 feet wide by 266.3 feet long, and the existing building has 7,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to operate a community medical center, health center. The applicant will renovate the existing building to accommodate medical offices, examination, examination rooms, dental office, treatment rooms, and an ethical pharmacy on perimeter. The auto, the total acreage for this parcel is 0.4445 acres, and the total acreage is on the R5 of street parking for commercial parcel is 0.6255, for a combined total of 1,0701 acres. Zoning ordinance 22, section 28, 431.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes.
This is a matter that came up from the zoning, planning and zoning board, it's a quasi-judicial matter, so anyone except lawyers that will testify, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Anybody that's going to, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. In addition, Madam Mayor, this is a procedure pursuant to section 3.06 of the city charter, that any item that comes out for, from the code, planning and zoning board, any matter placed, an affirmative vote of four-fifth vote shall require the, in order to reverse the, and I assure the planning and zoning board, will have to be four-fifth of the votes of the commission.
Okay, so, Mr. Attorney, there, I want to hear this in, in plain English, we are, there are four of us present, not five, what is the exact number that would be needed?
Four is sufficient, because it says four-fifth of the council. In other words, it doesn't say of those present, it's the council.
Of the council, so it would be four votes this evening.
In order to reverse the recommendation of the zoning and, the planning and zoning board.
Thank you, sir. Okay, since this is, item A is a public hearing, as read by the city clerk, this is how we will proceed with a public hearing. First, I will hear, we will hear from staff, then we will hear from the applicant, then I will open the public hearing to the public, I will close the public hearing, and then I will hear from my table. Okay. Mr. Penna?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. On October 22, 2019, the planning and zoning board had a public hearing on the same item for the property at 6400 Southwest A Street, as a primary, primary healthcare facility by Banyan Health Systems. The board held the hearing that night, there were residents present that spoke in opposition to the health center, and after this presentation by the in-house counsel for Banyan Health, the planning and zoning board voted three to zero to deny the application. They stated that it was incompatible with the character of the city, and other concerns that they had regarding public safety, and police dispatch to their present facilities, and also lack of security inside the, inside the establishment. They also had questions, the zoning board had questions as to why the partitions for the psychiatric rooms were of a stronger partition than normally required for an office, and they weren't satisfied with the responses they were given.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
I have a question. Can you repeat the part again about the partitions? What are you alluding to?
The plans that were shown to the zoning board and the plans you have tonight indicate that the area of the five psych, mental health rooms, diagn, treatment rooms, and also adjacent to the psyche, at the psychiatry's office, those partitions are of a heavier duty than the normal of the rest of the building.
What do you mean heavier duty?
Higher impact, drywall.
Why is that?
I don't know what occurs in a mental facility, so I couldn't tell you, I imagine somebody out of control, I guess, I don't know, hitting the walls screaming, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Anyone else from staff that wishes to present?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I think we need to hear, the chief of police has been asked to render a report
of his findings, and, and I think that it would be beneficial for everyone to hear what he has to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I was instructed to do some research on Banyan Healthcare, other facilities they have in Miami-Dade County, as well as render an opinion from the police department on a recommendation, or not a recommendation, of this approval. I contacted Miami-Dade County Police Department and the City of Miami, which is where there are other Banyan facilities currently in operation, and discovered that they were, there were dozens and dozens of reports to, calls for police service to those facilities. We, in the police department, are strapped for manpower, as, as is many, as are many police departments in, in our community, in Miami-Dade County, and to task our officers with additional calls, and especially with the potential for violence in the type of calls because of the clientele that apparently is going to be, being treated at this facility, it, my recommendation, and that of my staff, is that this be denied, and that that facility not be allowed there, to maintain the quality of life, the, the response time that our citizens and our corporate citizens are accustomed to, as well as the safety and well-being of, of the citizens and, and my officers as well.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, do we have that written report by the chief in our package?
Yes. You do, it's part of your application, and I didn't mean to take away the response from the city clerk, but I think, Madam Mayor, you may want to hear some, some statistical numbers, just to get an idea of how, what is the impact to our existing force and our small municipalities' police department. So I know that the chief spoke about dozens of calls for incidents, and I would like for him to, to give us some, to give you some numbers, and the audience, of course, of his findings, and how, you know, so that gives you an idea of how it could potentially impact our police department and the quality of service that we provide to the community.
That's why I was asking if we had a copy of that report.
You do.
To see those, those statistics. Thank you, Chief.
The total number of reports to the building where the facilities are currently housed in Miami and in Miami-Dade County totaled 289 calls from January 1 until I received the report, which was the end of October, beginning of November, so 10 months for, for all extents and purposes. Dividing that with the six existing facilities, that would be 48 additional calls per facility per year. Those could be two a day, those could be one every other day, that's, we, we don't know how those numbers will, will come in, but undoubtedly, there will be additional calls for service to this facility, even if, if these 289 calls are not specifically because of patient issues or anything like that. The, the police officers will be taken off their routine patrol or any other calls to go over there and handle it. At times, we have two officers, three officers on the road at a time, and if there is another emergency situation, if there's a severe crash or vehicle accident, we may not have an officer available to respond immediately, and who knows what, what could take place there, so, I mean, it's, it's, the potential is there for, for catastrophe in, in the making.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, ma'am.
If I may, from a financial perspective, I mean, in you, I mean, if I may ask the chief, of course, Mayor, if you allow me to ask the chief, if this application were to be approved, is it, in your professional opinion, that the city should augment our police force?
If it's approved, yes, there would be no doubt that we would have to add additional officers to, to cover the, the potential for additional calls at Banyan here in the city, without a doubt.
Thank you. Well, you know that, that has a, a cost in the budget, and so those are considerations that need to be made along the way. Just want to put that in the record.
I have been asked also by the city manager to advise you that pursuant to the memorandum that was sent out to the planning and zoning board, the medical facilities, office, medical offices or facilities are not allowed used pursuant to ordinance 282, and also the report of the, the minutes reflect that Mr. Paz, which is the chair, stated that he did nothing, the primary care facility as described was compatible with the neighborhood and the families living in the immediate area, that the presentation was not convinced of that this type of facility would be compatible with the neighborhood or the area, and a motion to recommend denial to the application was made and passed.
Thank you, sir.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
You, you say that we would have to augment our police department, so can you make a clarification of how many officers you think?
Again, if this was there, our, our minimum staffing would have to go up to at least four officers on each shift while the business is open, again, leaving two, whenever you get a disturbance call, which is what I think is mostly what we would get there, you have to send a minimum of two officers, you cannot send one officer there, it's, it's standard in, in the industry to send two for officer safety reasons. And, and my experience, I mean, this is my 40th year in law enforcement, and these people that, and I'm not saying that all of their clients are like this, obviously, but people that, that use narcotics develop, you as a fireman have seen it, and extraordinary strength, that sometimes three, four, and five officers, it takes it to, to deal with these people and bring them under control. So, at least four officers per shift, so that would be an addition of, of four more officers to the department.
There are a total of nine medical examination room and five dental services chairs, and five mental health examination rooms, so the, there's a, the number of examination room for mental psychiatrist room are, and there's one also for one psychiatrist.
And, and I didn't know, what I heard just this evening here is that the, the walls are going to be reinforced, that strengthens the, the requirement for, for officers, I mean, apparently they are anticipating the potential for some violence with, with some of their patients.
I, I actually need some clarification with that, I don't know if maybe when they make their presentation, they would expand on that, because I really do want some clarification on that. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, all right.
I have a question for the city manager.
Yes, go ahead. Sir?
Madam Manager, if we were to hire four new officers.
Yes, sir.
What would that cost?
To put a, an officer on the road with a vehicle, equipment, and salary plus benefits, you're talking about $100,000 ballpark figure per officer. So four new police officers would cost the city approximately $400,000.
A year.
A year. And that amount increases because of contractual obligations, and it's the cost of doing business. And you have to factor in not only the salary of the officer, but if the officer has to go to court, and I don't know if the chief would agree with me, but knowing the profession the way I do, I know that when arrests are made, or detentions are made, obviously those officers or first responders have to go to court or to hearings regarding those apprehensions, those detentions, those arrests. So that includes, you know, that also augments or increases the amount, because you have to pay the officers overtime, at time and a half.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have anyone else from staff that wishes to present to us? No? Okay. At this time, I am going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, no, no one has registered with me to speak on this item. Would you like to speak on this item?
Oh, please bring forward your speaker cards, if you have any.
I'm just turning the speaker's card to, please.
Mayor?
Yes?
I think the applicant should be the first one to.
Oh.
Do his presentation, and then the public.
Thank you for turning the cards.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
You have to open up the, for the proponent to.
Yes, and so at this time, I inadvertently opened the public hearing, do I have to close it and then open it again later to allow the applicant to speak prior to my?
You have to let the applicant be first.
Yes, and I, and I knew that, but I opened the public hearing, so I'm ass, I'm asking, do I close it, then, then, then ask the applicant to come forward?
The applicant should have an opportunity to present their case before you open the public.
I understand, but everybody opened it, so I'm going to close it, and then I'll open it with the applicant, is, is, is that correct, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, it was my error, I knew the applicant had to come forward, and I kind of like jumped the gun, so, at this time, if I could have the applicant come forward and present, and I am sorry, counsel, I.
That's quite right.
I said at the beginning what I was going to do, and then I didn't do it, my apologies.
That's quite right, thank you. Good evening, my name is Rick Morgan, I am the general counsel and chief risk officer of Banyan Health Systems. Before I get too far afield, Mr. Blanis, I'm compelled to answer the question that others couldn't but cast some aspersions. There are walls that are really thick, because they surrounded a vault that was in a bank. We didn't put them there, we don't need them for people banging on the walls, they are part of the building, they surrounded the former tenant's vault that was FDIC insured, and no doubt we're required to have such walls. There is no plans by Banyan to reinforce the walls in that facility, because clearly with no intent, no malice intended, there is a, a very unfortunate misrepresentation as to the intent of what Banyan Health Services plans to do at 6400 A Street. And while there is a history of Banyan being a good citizen and neighbor throughout Broward and Dade County for not 10 years, five decades, folks, members of the commission, for five decades, this entity has served, but the purpose of the 8th Street facility within West Miami is not its traditional business, it is a primary health facility, and, and let me, with the help of my glasses, advise you as to what that mission is. That is physical exams, preventative care, pain management, chronic illness management, pediatrics, well and sick child checkups, immunization, sports and school physicals, child behavioral health, women's health services, well-women's exams, family planning, prenatal care, medical assisted treatment, pharmacy, and when I say the pharmacy, it's not the traditional Walgreens or CVS, this is an internal pharmacy that we will only deal with our patients, and it's, it's done for expedience and as, as a service. The import of the primary healthcare facility that is planned emanates from a federal program under the first Bush administration, which is what is referred to, a federally qualified health center, that delineates very clear and unambiguous, pardon me, unambiguous qualifications as to what you can do, and the mission there is to provide comprehensive healthcare with compassion for the entire community. And you do that pursuant to these federal standards, you can't deviate from those standards, you can't open and then all of a sudden say, well, we're going to change what we want to do, you can't do that, we're governed by the FQ, FQHC standards. And that is what the intent is. The intent, you know, at, at the, at the prior meeting, notwithstanding the efforts to say 17 times, it's a primary health center, the focus was on the history of what Banyan had done, and Banyan's not going to shy away from an enormous benefit it's done for mental health and a drug addiction, but the questions were, are you going to bus people in, are people coming from, from court orders? The answer is no, and no, and no. This is a primary health facility for the local community, just what the FQHC requires. Banyan is not going to bus anyone in, this is not a case of if Judge X orders somebody to go to drug treatment or mental healthcare, they're not going to go to that facility. That is not going to happen. So, now, when Banyan was looking at facilities to open an FQHC, it was looking at a number of potential opportunities and saw the building, pardon me, at 8th Street, and it, we did our, our homework, as you would expect, and, and I've heard on a number of occasions that there's no code provision, there's no use provision in the city of West Miami for a primary care facility, and, and I, I was struck by, I took it upon myself to read ordinance 282 dated February 1, 1967, as amended from time to time, and at section 4.3, it references C uses, and in that section, it delineates 73 uses that don't require a special use permit, and number 48 says, medical and dental office. So, I looked to see if there were any restraints, if there were any conditions, and perhaps more enlightening, were there any regulations or rules, things that fundamental due process that would say, you know, fair play, substantive justice would say, if you're going to invest money and go about your business, here are the rules of the game, here's what you need to do. There aren't any. It says, a medical and dental office, well, we plan to have both, and as part of the FQ, FQHC, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, we think it's incumbent upon healthcare services to provide integrated medical services today. The days of going to the cardiologist, and then going to see a mental health provider, then going to see a physical therapist, they're waning, whether it's insurance companies, whether it's doctor groups, we want to take care of the person, preferably at one time at one location, that's the concept of the FQHC. And, you know, I can only allay the concerns of the community, if I were in the community and somebody was suggesting that there were going to be troubled souls walking the street at midnight, looking for drugs, or mentally ill, I would be concerned. I agree, that's not what's happening here, and there were concerns, so, so it's a little troubling when I hear, God bless him, the chief of police for 40 years, his premises are based upon information that's simply not correct. We, we have no intentions of increasing the cost of doing business. What we come to this city with is looking to employ between 18 and 35 people over time with salaries of 50 to $200,000, some will live in your community, but all will shop in your community, we will enhance that business, we will make that property look better, we, we have sufficient parking, and then some, but every component part of the analysis has been considered and looked at, and will be treated appropriately. So one could logically say, well, we approve you, and then you change, well, every city I know of has compliance, you know, we have to live with what we tell you we're going to do like everyone else, and if we deviate, there are consequences, and I don't even like to speak in those terms, but given sort of the adamant suggestions and the focus on mental health and drug addiction, which this company has done successfully for 50 years, I'm compelled to repeat, those services will not be performed at the 8th Street property. Now, if somebody comes in, pardon me, with a mental health issue co-occurring, the term of art, you have a physical issue, some malady, but you also are suffering from depression, we'll see you for both. We're not going to treat the depression at that location, we have other facilities, but we, we don't think it's appropriate for that person to go home, wait five weeks to have an appointment to see some doctor somewhere else, we'll speak to them, we'll deal with them, and they will be treated. We'll speak to them, we'll deal with them, and they will be treated at one of our other facilities if they so choose, or they'll go somewhere else. But that is the mission of Bangin, that is the hope of bringing to this city a wonderful primary care facility. Now, in my research, I noticed that no less than thirty-four entities within West Miami property, some with signs referencing psychiatry, all had C use, their permits are C use. And I've had some pictures, Madam Chair, if I could submit this into the record as exhibit A, I very much appreciate it. It is a composite list of thirty-four entities as well as some of the pictures of those facilities and their addresses.
Yes, you may, but before that, I need a little bit of clarification on what you just said. You're saying you found thirty-four entities within the city of West Miami?
So.
That deal with psychiatry?
No.
No, so please elaborate.
Thirty-four medical facilities within the city of West Miami that have the C use, and at least, at least two or three of those also provide psychiatric services. And in fact, I have one with the picture of the front door where it has psychiatric in the window.
If I may, Madam Manager, Mr. Penna?
Mr. Penna?
I don't think we even have thirty-four medical offices within our city.
Well, there's.
I'm sorry? Okay, very well. Counsel, you may present whatever it is you have to us.
And Madam Chair, I would just note that one building alone at thirteen fifty Southwest Fifty-seventh Avenue has about fifteen medical offices within that building itself. But if I, shall I hand it to the clerk or what is the process of proofing?
And do you have a copy for each of us or just one for the clerk?
No, I think I, if I may approach the chair.
Of course, yes. That's fine. Be sure the clerk gets one. And Mr. Penna, I'd like you to see this also.
Yes.
Can you clarify again the issue about the reinforcement of the walls? You mentioned something about the bank and vault, but what does that have to do with, with your project?
It has nothing to do with our project, so let me try to be clear as I can.
Okay, please.
There was, I don't believe, an intentional, an unintentional misrepresentation that somehow in our use of that facility, that we either are intending, well, we have either a need for, placed in, or find some need for these enhanced walls. And the answer is no, no, no. What they are are enhanced walls that existed in connection with the prior tenant, which was a bank. The walls surrounded the vault. We don't need them, frankly, they cost too much to remove. They're not doing anybody any harm. If there are better walls, we'll keep them. It wouldn't be our intention to build them with those walls, but if they're there, we're not going to use our money to tear them down to put in less solidified walls. They're there, we'll use them, but we don't, we're not going to be servicing clientele that go through what people perceive to be these emotional traumatic moments where people are going through withdrawals from drug addiction or severe mental anguish. Those are not the services for this facility that are intended at any point in time. Yes, at other facilities we do it and will continue to do it, not here. So let me be clear, those walls pre-existed, they were built by others for the specification for the prior tenant.
Mr. Penna, is that correct?
There used to be a bank vault, yes.
So, so the walls, so these reinforced walls have nothing to do with this project? Yeah, can you please clarify?
And Madam Clerk, if you would, I'd like to see that.
Counselor.
What the counsel presented.
Counselor, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned that at times you, the clinic would be presented with a psychiatric patient or a patient needing mental health assistance. And that he would not be turned down since he's already there, right? That's what you alluded to.
Well, I, let me be clear, I don't think I used the term psychiatric. I said folks that might have depression or what have you.
Well, but, and my other part of the question is, so then why do you have five mental health examination rooms and one psychiatric room?
Okay, as I mentioned, one.
In just in case someone drops in?
Mr. Blains.
That doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Blains, as I, as I mentioned.
So if you can please clarify that for me, please.
I'm going to do my best.
Thank you.
Mr. Blains, when I listed the items of services that the primary care facility would have, among those was pediatric mental health, excuse me. There were privacy considerations relating to that. And so, so those were the allocations of offices that we, and those who are in better position than I, to outline how we were going to use the twenty or so offices. And that's the way it was laid out. But when, when, when people come in with physical issues in an aging population, depression is not uncommon. A doctor who's dealing with a medical issue, meaning physiological, will hand, you know, lack of a better phrase, refer to someone else in the facility who's going to be dealing with an issue of depression, what have you. But let me be clear, it is not the intent of Bangin to have people to come to that facility in the first instance because of they need psychiatric care. That's not what the facility is for. It is an ancillary service, supplemental service, that goes hand in hand with what I believe every hospital and every medical facility comes across every day of its life, that people come in, they have physical problems, and they have these ancillary or supplemental, lack of a better word, or other issues dealing with mental health.
So let me mirror this back at you.
Sure.
So, so you're saying that these mental health examination rooms are basically pediatric?
They will be.
Or, are they?
Yes.
Pediatric?
Yes.
And the psychiatric room, also pediatric?
I don't think it's limited to psychiatric, I think it's going to be used by whomever.
So, so the mental health examination rooms, are they strictly pediatric?
The intent is, I don't know it's going to be solely, because if somebody comes in, we need a room, but the intent is to handle pediatric mental health issues.
Okay, so, so then, then these rooms are also for adults?
They may be used for adults as well.
All right, okay. And so is the psychiatric room. So, so you have five mental health examination rooms and one psychiatric rooms? Just in case someone presents with possible depression, they can be treated in these rooms, right?
And.
They, if they come in with a physical issue, a medical issue, and they pose that they're, they're depressed, then they're ferried away to these rooms. Is that the way it's supposed to work?
In large measure, yes, but those off, those rooms may also, may also be used if they're not being used. I mean, we're not going to have them as museum pieces, if you will. If the medical needs are there, they will be reallocated as, you know, as appropriate for examination rooms for physical, but that was the initial allocation.
They are designated mental health examination rooms. And I just don't understand why you need five of them, just, just in case someone comes in with a medical problem and says, oh, I'm depressed. And all of a sudden they're detoured from the medical side to the, to the mental health side.
Ms. Blains, I think that that is a reasonable question and I can certainly provide more information on that, but I think that the, at the time, that it was being prepared, that the best thought process is that was a reasonable allocation.
But, but this is what you guys are asking.
I'm not disputing that, but.
This is what you guys are asking us.
Well.
So I need to make sure that I understand everything. As, you know, because you guys want five mental health examination rooms and one psychiatric room.
And I would ask if you would allow me to provide the additional information as to more substantive response that may allay your concern.
Absolutely.
Here's what I'd like to do, Counselor. Finish your presentation, of course, whatever else you have to present to us. Then I would like to open the public hearing to hear from the public. Then once I close it, I would allow you to come back up to answer our questions at that time. Is that, is that?
Fair enough.
Work with you. Finish your presentation now, whatever else you have to tell us.
I think, I think.
Well, I'll invite him back up after for questions.
I think that you should allow him to complete his presentation.
Yes, that's what I just said. I'm asking him to please to complete his presentation, then I will.
He has an opportunity to rebut anything that is said.
Right, so after the public hearing, I will invite him back up, obviously, because that's the time we will be discussing it at the table, to answer any of our questions. But yes, at this time, please, please finish your presentation.
Madam Chair, I think, I think, I believe you have the gist of what our intention is. And we've made a good faith effort to advise you, in summary, it's primary care facility, within the framework of existing code, the two eighty-two ordinance of the city of West Miami. And there is no known restriction in writing, provision, amendment, revision, that puts a restriction upon what we intend to do. Madam Chair, if I may ask, Dr. Rubinson is here, he's the chairman of the board, he would like to briefly present some comments. And if I, if I may request that he be allowed to do so at this time?
Is he part of your presentation or will he want to speak during the public hearing?
My understanding is it's part of the presentation.
Mr. Attorney?
I think that he should furnish his presentation.
He is.
And you can open it for a public hearing.
And at that time, the doctor will be invited up.
He has an opportunity to rebut anything.
No, no, the doctor that he would like to present now.
Right.
Is he, may he present the doctor as part of his presentation?
Sure.
The doctor, okay, very well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, let's hold our questions until after. Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Richard Rubinson, I'm the chairperson of the Board of Bangin Health. I'm a retired physician, I was a surgeon who practiced in the South Miami Baptist area for about forty years. I should tell you that you have to have a clear picture of what an FQHC is, federally qualified health center. It's a primary, primary care center. Just let me just give you an example, which may be relevant to West Miami. Here you have your, this little city with about now eight thousand people now, even though the last census was a little less, it's about eight thousand, with a nice array of doctors, a little light on, on pediatrics, a little light on psychiatry perhaps, no OBGYN. But the doctors who are in the area are doing very nicely and serve the area fairly well. But here's what happens in general to people like those who are, who populate South Miami. This is a hardworking city. Your people are basically blue collar people. They're working long hours, six days a week perhaps, perhaps have two jobs. When they need medical care, they have to get it at night or on the weekends or on Sundays, when most of the doctor facilities are closed. So what, what, what these people do? They go to the emergency room and they're either treated there and have to be referred for follow-up service, or they're admitted to the hospital and then are discharged and have to have follow-up. There's where the problem lies. The physicians in this area, in many areas in this county and statewide, are really full and can take, take no more patients. And so these people who, your people, who need follow-up care, need the primary care for the illnesses that they have, they don't have a lot of choices, places to go. Doctors are, in practice, are not, are not too interested in taking patients on Medicaid because the reimbursements are so low. You just can't make out with a whole practice of Medicaid patients. And surely, if you have no insurance, forget about it. No doctor wants to take you. So having an open medical care facility that is available to people who are underinsured or uninsured is very important. And I think it's a good thing for West Miami to have a facility like that to supplement the medical care that's already available. You know, the whole problem, just want to take one second, you only hear all the politicians talking about Medicare for all and Obamacare, blah, blah, blah. The real problem that nobody is talking about is access to care. That is why the costs of medical care in this country is so, so large. Here, we, arguably, we have the best medical schools, we have the best doctors, we have the best hospitals, we have the best medical research, but we have lousy results in our medical care, twenty-eighth in infant mortality. Age, other, the other indicators going down. And the reason is, has to do with access. So if you, in your wisdom, can look upon this primary care facility as another access point, in my opinion, you will doing, you will be doing your population a great deal of good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rubinson. Mr. Morgan, is there anyone else as part of your group, part of your presentation?
No.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Blan is on your question regarding the partitions. The statement by Mr. Morgan, there were two vaults in the existing bank. One is going to be used as a provider workroom, which requires no alteration except the installation of a door. And the other one is being provided, is being used as a storage off one of the mental health offices. The other partitions that you see, like I, like I indicated, that are hashtag reinforced, they are fire-rated reinforced partitions and they're brand-new partitions to create the three, three mental offices and the psychiatric office. And as far as the, the list that Mr. Morgan submitted, yes, those are businesses here in the city of West Miami of individual doctors that have their offices here in West Miami for different services.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. I want to present this to the rest of the table, since we only have one copy. If you can look at that. Commissioner, this is what the council presented. All right, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing once again. Public hearing is.
Will we be able to ask more questions?
Yes, after I close the public hearing, I will invite Mr. Morgan back up to answer all of our questions. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you will call those that, that wish to speak, please.
Yes, Carlos Aureo.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board. My name is Carlos Aureo. I'm a business owner on the block where they want to do the, and I had a lot of concern before coming to this meeting, and now I'm scared what I'm hearing here. Basically, every time I head to a mental facility, five rooms, all psychiatrists, I mean, I'm kind of scared even for my tenants, that they're going to be moving, are we going to be safe? Those people coming to get treatment, are they going to be coming on the car? They're going to be dropping on the bus? They're going to be coming on walking bicycles? We have, our city is small, but it's very nice and safe. And I love this city. I've been since nineteen ninety-six. And basically, I'm overwhelmed about the, the city, and I love it. So have a type of business like this one, it's not going to be no good for citizens in our business. I don't see nothing positive about this facility. The mental health, it very scares me. I have children, grandchildren, and I'm kind of scared. It's making me think what I'm going to do in the future, stay, leave, I don't know. There's going to be a lot of wondering people, what they want to do, or we have cars that can be breaking in. I don't know. To me, it sounds kind of scary, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Aureo. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Diana Rio.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Rio. I have to disclose, I am a member of the Planning and Zoning Board. I was one of the three votes that denied the recommendation for this project.
I'm sorry, let me, let me interrupt you there. I think that you should not speak. You were a member of the Planning and Zoning Board that made the recommendation.
Yes, but I am also a resident within the five-hundred-foot radius.
I, I think that it would be prudent for the chair not to allow this particular citizen to speak because she sat in the same body that you're judging in favor or against right now. So that's my recommendation.
Ms. Rios, I will always take the advice of my city attorney, so I apologize. Upon his advice and recommendation, I'm going to ask that, that you not speak.
Okay.
My apologies. Again, I, I will always follow my, my attorney's guidance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Mr. Attorney, she was here as a resident, correct? I mean, she's, she's, she was coming to the podium.
I understand it, but I'm talking about being prudent.
Okay.
She is, I, I have never seen a judge in the circuit court to be as a witness in the appellate court.
Understood, I just want to be sure that.
This goes the same thing.
Perfect.
I apologize because I respect her very much. But the thing is that it's only prudent not to have the same person that made the recommendation. The recommendation is before you, and it's, you, you can read it. And as I say, I, I think that it would be prudent not to, to have her as a witness.
And as stated, I will, I will always follow your advice. Thank you, sir. Okay, next speaker.
Yes, for the record, we have Richard Robinson and Richard Morgan, they are applicants. I have the, yeah.
Okay.
Next person, Natalie Milián.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your great service to our city. My name's Natalie Milián, and I reside at six one seven zero Southwest Nineteenth Street. I'm here today in opposition of items eleven A and B. I urge you all to consider and give way to the determination of your planning and zoning board, who were unanimous in their opposition of this application. Approving this application would bring undue hardship to our city. It will generate excessive traffic and jeopardize the safety of our residents, in my opinion. Simply put, the application will not benefit the health, safety, and welfare of our city. The property has many available uses that exist already, which would benefit the community. And in this case, you would be making a special exception for a use that is not needed, nor will it positively impact the residents of our community. On the contrary, the clinic will be operating from this location, may lead to a whole host of other issues. I'm not certain why the representatives from the Banyan state that we don't have primary care, pediatric care, because we have Nicholas Children's Hospital within five minutes of all the residents of our city, and they are known for the finest pediatric primary care besides being a hospital facility. So I'm not sure why they keep saying that. Counsel also mentioned that there will be no mental or drug abuse services, and I would ask if they're willing to add language prohibiting those uses into their application. While I'm sure that they do do good work, I'm opposed to this sort of center being placed in such close proximity to our residents. My husband and I bought our first home in this city because we wanted a safe and quiet place to raise a family. And I know that we all share the same desire to make sure that West Miami remains a safe haven for everyone. So that's why I'm here to ask that you consider the impact this type of center will have on our quality of lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milián.
No more, Speaker's card, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else who might want to speak but didn't fill out the card? No? Okay, last chance. I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, so I am bringing it to the table for discussion, concerns. We can invite counsel back up to answer any of our questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After reading and listening to the report by our chief of police, which may compromise the safety and well-being of the residents and the repercussions that this application will have in our police department also, I cannot support this application under any circumstance. I make a motion to deny this application.
It's premature, I'm sorry.
Well, it's already been said.
I'm sorry, but I think that he has an absolute right to rebut, to make another presentation, and then you can choose to.
I can read it again.
Make whatever motion you have, but he does have the right to make a rebuttal presentation. And of course, the, the commission has the right also to hear additional testimony from the staff.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Appigan?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm a little concerned that the due process rights are being abrogated by preconceived decision-making. It is dis.
I have to, excuse me, we're talking about legal terms, so, no, sir, we're not abrogating the due process because you have been afforded the opportunity, and I stopped the commissioner from making any further comments. And yes, we're respecting your due process a hundred percent.
I, I still have a lot of questions, so.
Commissioner, balance.
But he does have the right to rebut, so allow him the opportunity to rebut, okay?
And then we will ask you any other questions. Go ahead, sir.
Fair enough. The last speaker indicated some issues with traffic. The, Mr. Pena's report of October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, indicated the traffic, and I'm quoting, the, the traffic entrances do not show any adverse effects to the surrounding roadways. There was no indication in Mr. Pena's report, which was a recommendation for, for Banyan to proceed with some provisos, but in terms of traffic, that was not one of the concerns that would, that is certainly raised to a level of a problem from the planning and the zoning department. I think if Mr. Pena's memo of October fourteenth delineated what perceived concerns were, but I think, you know, Mr. Pena and his department understood very clearly, and I'm, and I'm trying to be as political as I can, but there, there's some notion of a scare that our citizens, and these are our citizens, the citizens of West Miami, that may have a tough day, you know, a tough week, somebody dies, there's a breakup, and they need some help, that somehow face-eating zombies are going to be walking the streets of West Miami. We're better than that. We really are. We're just better than that. And, and this notion that, that people are going to be driving cars up the sidewalks, knocking people over. And the other point is, is that the Nicholas facility is not, is not in West, in the city of West Miami. We're talking about the confines of the city of West Miami and what Banyan can do for this city. I just want it to be taken under deep consideration that the, that the services that Banyan proposes to provide are services for our families, to your families, and perhaps my family, and perhaps me. There's nothing insidious, and there should not be anything considered insidious about those services, or that in any way will defile the city, or in any way harm the safety or welfare of this city. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I will again open it up to the table for any questions.
Excuse me, there is no, no emotion here, no hyperbole. I mean, we're all, in effect, finding effort here. So, you know, my concern is, and alluding to the traffic, you said that Mr. Pena said that there was no, not going to be a traffic issue? Is that just coming from you, Mr. Pena, or is this a scientific traffic study that we did?
No, sir, that's from me.
That's from you, okay.
It's part of the memo, it's part of the memo we have in our package, November nineteen.
I didn't see that. How many parking spaces is, is being considered, or you have for this project?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Six, six-zero, they're approved.
Six-zero.
Correct.
That's including for the staff also?
In total.
In total, sixty?
Correct.
Okay. How, how much staff you're going to, planning on having there? How many cars you think will be staff?
We, we will, we're anticipating opening with fifteen staff members. You know, statistically, seventy percent, eighty percent will drive, so you're at twelve cars, and then that would leave forty-eight for patients. We would never hit that number.
So you anticipate a lot of traffic, patient traffic and, and car traffic?
No, no.
To have that many parking spots?
Well, it's there. I mean, we, it's the property. We didn't, it's part and parcel of the lease arrangement.
Right.
The owners of the property own that, that, that's within the four walls of their property. It's part of our lease arrangement. Perhaps we wouldn't have chosen it if we had to build it ourselves, but it's there and it's part of the lease.
Okay. I don't know if it was you, or it was a doctor, that said something, kind of jumped out at me, something about open twenty-four hours?
No, so I don't know if that's what the doctor said, but let me, let me try to be clear. The hours are nine to, are, hopefully, if we proceed with the project, will be nine to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, so who said, was that, somebody said twenty-four hours?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
The doctor may have.
Yes.
Yes.
Alluded to it, didn't specifically say it, but alluded to that.
Yeah.
I do have that note. I was going to ask that same question, Commissioner. And, and Counsel, if I may, it does say here in your application that you'll be open on Saturdays, so if you could.
That's not, that may, initially, will be open Monday to Friday.
Then why does it say Saturday?
I, I'm, I will have that revised then.
So you're stating on the record, you will not be open on Saturdays?
A year, two years down the road, but initially, the plan is Monday to Friday.
Very well, thank you. Okay. Go ahead, so, Commissioner.
So you say you were going to clarify something for me? Do you have something?
I'm trying to remember.
It was about the, the, the five, the five rooms for mental health examinations and psychiatric room.
The author.
You're, you're asking for that. You're asking us to approve that. And my question to you is, you know, why have so many if you're standing there telling me that you don't anticipate anybody? And you're telling me that, maybe we'll get one or two come in and they might be a little bit depressed?
Okay, so, so I think.
Please clarify that, that's, that's very important.
I, I spent, if I may, by way of analogy.
I need to make a decision here, and it needs to be clear.
Mr. Blanis, I spent three decades of my life at what is referred to as big law, and there were times that we had leases. And as we entered into our lease negotiations and sought all the requirements, we were told, you know, how many secretarial stations and this and that. Is that ultimately the plan? But those who are in the medical field felt that that was an appropriate analysis at the time of this submission, that that was, but it was never intended, much like if, if businesses requiring us to be open on a Saturday, at some point, we would seek that. But if the need is there for more medical attention and the allocation needs to be for, for medical needs, we'll use, we're not going to just turn them into bookcases, we will use those offices for medical needs. But the allocation was not intended to be etched in stone. It was the initial allocation of approximately twenty offices and how we were going to go about using those. And that's really the best answer I can give you. Otherwise, I'm making it up, and I'm trying to be as candid as I can be.
You know, I, I'm a simple person, and I look at things in simple terms. And, you know, you're just not convincing me. You just don't have an answer, a simple answer.
Well, I'm trying to.
You're telling me that you've been in law for thirty years, and that's commendable, that's, that's fantastic, that's great, but, you know, it's not addressing my concern here. And you know exactly what I'm alluding to.
Mr. Blanis, what, what I'm not going to say, because it's not true, is that we want five offices for mental health because we expect an abundance of people with mental health issues. That, that's not what we anticipate. As I've said, and I want to be clear on the record before this commission, the facility at Eighth Street, if we are so, if we receive the benefits and can open that and operate it, will be a primary health facility with the services that I outlined. And as you can see, they are, all fall within the ambit of primary care for adults, children, women, and what have you. In addition to that, we have an organization that has a long and established history of knowing about mental illnesses. And when we see that, we're going to handle primary care. We are not going to shut our eyes to people with difficulties. And whether it's two offices, three offices, five offices, I think the author of that document made a conscious effort to lay out what they perceive to be the initial need. And that's the best answer I can give you.
Good enough, thank you. I have another question. What's an ethical pharmacy?
That's a misnomer. There's no such thing as an ethical pharmacy. And the reason that they put that there is because we still have it in the code.
Right.
But that's only a pharmacy.
I was trying to figure that one out.
No, but that's, that's not their fault, that's ours.
I was, I, I didn't know, and so we put it in there because that's what was in the code.
So, so tell me about this pharmacy. There's going to be a pharmacy on the premises?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Much, much like a hospital. We see somebody, they need an antibiotic, they need a drug, and they can pick it up before they leave.
So it's a full, full-service pharmacy?
Correct.
Okay.
May I make a clarification, please?
Yes, please.
The reason that we have a special use permit is that we set up the parameters of what that facility is going to be used for. In other words, if you say, sir, that you're going to open Monday to Friday, it has to be Monday, Monday to Friday, and can be no deviation unless you come back and get approval from the commission. In addition, if you say that you're going to have a certain amount of people or services, that's the way that it's going to be, because it is a specific, special permit. So it cannot be deviated pursuant to the convenience of whatever business there is, whether that's a clinic or a bank or whatever, okay?
Counsel, may I address that?
Sure.
I'm still troubled by the notion that the code of the city of Miami has that the C use references a, a medical and dental office, and I'm struggling with why Banyan doesn't fall within the ambit of that use.
It says office, so it's singular. It doesn't say offices that is plural.
Well, I, I would suggest, very respectfully, that the list that I provided to you of organizations in, in the city of West Miami have offices with multiple doctors, surgical facilities with multiple doctors, and they have C permits.
We're not talking about that, sir. We're talking about the impact that we have in the, I mean, that's the way the court reads, so I cannot change it. So, but that's, we're talking about the impact that it has, having, how many parking spaces you said you had?
Sixty.
Okay, according to what I read here, also, you will start with eighteen employees and could be at some point some thirty employees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the impact that, that I believe that the commission is asking.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Manager.
Madam Mayor, may I ask the applicant a question, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Sir, is this going to be classified as an intake or receiving facility, Banyan?
No.
No?
And let me make sure that I understand the nomenclature. That it would be receiving from, from a court-ordered facility, or, no.
Not from Jackson, not from Larkin, or any other medical facility?
No.
For follow-up treatment?
No.
And I have another question, Madam Mayor. I think that the presentation basically alluded to the fact that there, you know, if granted this application, they would be serving the West Miami community. What assurances do you have that your patients will all come from the City of West Miami? Have you done any surveying, any marketing in the area? Have you been approached by residents that want to receive your services?
The FQHC is, is a federally qualified medical facility. There are analyses prepared as to areas within the country that would benefit, whether it's income levels, age. They look at the demographics. And the City of West Miami fell within the ambit of the FQHC analysis.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morgan, I have a question.
Let me go further in saying that the application reads for medical center. It doesn't read for a medical office. So a medical center, it's supposed to be wider projection than a single medical office.
Mr. Penna, may I ask you a question? I could swear that I read this. Have we recently changed the description of the first paragraph in our application for special use? I, the ones I've, I've seen prior to this had a completely different wording. If you will come, I'm referring to this first paragraph. The application for special use permit. Did we recently change the wording of that? I know I've read a different description of a special use permit.
Well, there are different applications that you, that you have looked at.
No, no, the wording of this first paragraph of our, on our application.
Correct. This is for special use for the section dealing with uses for commercial applications. You have special use permit for planned development dealing with development.
Okay, okay.
You have special use dealing with waiver of plat, tenant of flats.
Understood, understood. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Mr. Morgan, you, I'm sorry, first. Are there any other questions?
Do I have to read it again?
No.
Well, I think I have, I make a motion.
Well, what, we, your first motion was.
That's what I'm asking the mayor.
I'm asking if, do we have, because I still have some questions, if I may. Commissioner, do you have any, Vice Mayor, do you have any questions, comments?
I just, I just want to make some comments that to this very nice group of people, business people, professional, doctor, counsel, counselor, and we appreciate you selecting West Miami to bring this application. Let me tell you that we are a small city, but we have also medical facilities around for, for our residents. We have the Children Hospital, Sixty-second Avenue, and Twenty-ninth and Thirty Street. We have urgent care by Baptist Hospital, by Thirty-seventh Avenue. We will have Jackson Memorial Hospital. They are going to open an urgent care at Eighteenth Street and Galliano. We have an urgent care, Bay Road and Seventy-second Avenue. I mean, in reference to that, we have places to go, you know, when somebody's sick. Also, we have the Rescue Forty. Behind this building is the fire department with the big truck, Rescue Forty, right here. So we have protection about our residents. And this is one thing, I congratulate you because you're nice, you make a nice presentation of your business and your group. Of course, we have here doctors and dentists, individual offices. Doctor Perez, Doctor Swisher, whatever. But you are an institution. It's a big difference. The offices that we have here in the city, small offices, private, personal, individual, to you institution, what you represent, is a big thing. I just want to make a clarification about that, the difference about that. So by now, this is the, I just want to let know this group. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of questions, and I want to get to some clarifications from staff. Mr. Morgan, you have mentioned several times that you are a federally qualified health center. Federally qualified health center, does that mean you are federally funded as well?
There, there are funds that will emanate from that for, for medical services, correct?
And being a federally funded health center, are you not able to turn away any patients that come through your doors?
We don't turn away people who come through our doors.
Well, you stated that you would be sending patients if they came strictly for mental health services, that you would send them elsewhere.
We would send them to our other facilities.
So if your facility is federally funded, you are able to turn away patients?
No, I'm not making myself clear. The services that, if someone came to our facility, a little unusual if they had a drug issue, if you will, and going through withdrawals. We wouldn't turn them away. We just certain, we just wouldn't deal with them at this Eighth Avenue facility. We have other facilities, so it wouldn't be a matter of turning them away.
You would redirect them? Okay.
I have a question. I mean, let's just say that that's the case. Okay, you have somebody having withdrawals or DTs, you know? That's, that's a very serious situation. You can't reroute that patient and send him somewhere else. Actually, they need to be in an emergency room. They are in dire need of medical assistance. So you're telling me that you're gonna take a patient like that? And you're gonna send them to, to another facility to be treated?
Mr. Blains.
Because, you know, withdrawal symptoms, DTs, that's, that's, that's emergency, emergency room type situation. You can die in a, in a heartbeat from those conditions that you're mentioning. So, I mean, I, that doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Blains, today, there are people in the emergency room at Baptist Hospital that are going through withdrawals, and are they going through the heartaches that you're mentioning? And we have a contract with them. And we pick them up, and we send them to our facility. So the very thing that you're referring to is happening today. And the reason being is that Baptist doesn't do as good a job as we can after fifty years of understanding the symptoms and the methodologies to help folks. So that's what's going on today.
Another question for you, sir. Is your facility going to be appointments only, or will you take walk-ins?
I don't have that answer.
Does anyone here have that answer? And the answer is?
Yes, we would take walk-ins as well.
Okay. So, Banyan, obviously, your name precedes you, precedes this facility that you like, you would like to open. So Banyan is known and has been known for, how long has Banyan been around?
Fifty years.
Fifty years. Banyan is well-known as a mental health service provider. So if you take walk-ins, there is nothing that's going to stop walk-ins requesting mental health services because of your well-known reputation as being a, a qualified mental health provider, right?
That's correct.
So you will take walk-ins. I just wanted to be sure I established that. You will take walk-ins, not appointment-based only. Okay.
Madam Mayor, a specific question from one of the applicants.
I'm sorry? There is a question? Okay.
Please approach the podium.
Well, my question was answered. My question was, would you take walk-ins? And the answer was yes.
Right, so we do take walk-ins, absolutely. People walk in, but being a primary care facility, we have another primary care facility in the vicinity. We don't have mental health walk-ins at that facility because frankly, we have pediatrics, we have primary care physicians at that facility. That is the type of facility that this will be. It will be a replica of our other primary care facility. So although we do have walk-ins, I don't want to mischaracterize those walk-ins, those walk-ins will be the services that we perform. Now, yes, we do have a psychiatric room. That is for a psychiatrist, right? And that, what you see in the plans is really something that will be developed over the next five years. We're not gonna fill that facility in year one, so it's gonna take some time. So your questions regarding those five therapy offices, well, that may.
If you would, sir, just address my question about walk-ins.
So, yes, we will take walk-ins, but the walk-ins will be primarily primary care walk-ins.
With all due respect, how do you know what a walk-in's gonna be if it's a walk-in?
Because we already do it at Thirty-seven, Thirty-three, our other primary care facility.
There is no way you can tell me you will know what every walk-in is coming for. They're a walk-in.
We won't know what every walk-in will be. No, we won't. But it will be a primary care facility. Those are the individuals that we'll treat.
Granted. But your name, your, your, your high-quality services will lend to walk-ins being perhaps mental health service required? Because it's a walk-in. You, if it's an appointment, you'll know what that patient is coming to you for.
That might be perhaps.
A walk-in, you will not know what they're walking in for. If, whether it's a cut on their finger, a broken arm, a broken tooth?
Correct.
Or in need of mental health services?
Correct.
Because it's a walk-in.
Correct.
So thank you, that answered my question. Thank you, sir.
Sir, what's your name for the record? Name and address for the record for the gentleman?
Vicente Carolewas, One-O-One-Five-Zero, Southwest One Hundred and Eighteen Terrace.
And your, your, your relation to the company is?
I work for the company.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question for you. Something you said just jumped out at me. You said that you're, you're comparing this, this primary care facility to your other primary care facilities.
Correct.
Which ones?
We have a primary care facility on West Flagler where we treat basically primary care facilities, primary care patients. We do have walk-ins. We have other facilities that we refer to for mental health counseling. We don't do it at that facility.
Thank you.
What's the address of the Flagler location, please? The one you just mentioned? What's the address of that Flagler location?
Thirty-seven, Thirty-three, West Flagler.
Thank you, sir. So that's known as Banyan Health Systems?
Correct.
Yes?
It's a question back there.
I'm sorry. Question? Okay.
There is a concern that.
Please, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Is this a question, or is it a presentation?
It's a response to a question that was asked.
Name and address for the record, please?
I am Dr. Maraima Trujillo. I'm a doctor that works for Banyan Health System, and I am the chief medical officer in charge of the crisis stabilization services. And you stated that you had some concerns about any psychiatric or any substance abuse walk-in that may be going into DTs or withdrawals. We handle those every single day of our lives at Thirty-eight-hundred West Flagler Street, which is an inpatient psychiatric unit. Anyone that comes in as a walk-in to any of our mental health facilities or any of our primary care facilities will be screened, and a decision will be made if they need medical care, psychiatric or substance abuse, and they'll be routed to the facility that does provide the accurate services.
Will you transport them there? Or how will they get there?
Yes, we will.
So you will transport them from your facility to another facility?
Yes, we will transport them from that facility to our facility. In fact, we have an MRT, mobile response team, that if the facility in Eighth Street and Sixty-four-hundred calls and says, someone walked in here with a health disorder that is not primary care, is mental health or substance abuse, we will go pick him up and take him to the crisis unit at Thirty-eight-hundred.
Thank you, Doctor. I have a question, if I may, on police procedure, chief or deputy chief. If there is an officer, City of Miami, Coral Gables, anywhere with our surrounding area, unincorporated aid, and that situation were to result in, I'm not sure what the terminology is, someone requiring medical, mental services?
Commonly referred to as a Baker Acted?
Thank you. Yes, that is what I'm saying. That officer responds to the call and finds out that that is the situation. Does that officer take that person to, to Turner-Gilford? Do they take them to a specific hospital? Or do they take them to the nearest facility that would provide the care that's required?
They would take them to a medical facility. The closest one that we take them to is either Larkin or the one at Palmetto and Coral Way, Westchester. I don't know if this would be a facility where we would be able to take those patients.
So having a Banyan, because that's what this facility will be called, officers know very well from, from past experience that Banyan would be the place to take this particular person, correct?
I can't answer that, but if they are a psychiatric receiving.
If they provide such services, they would take them to the closest one.
An intake facility, they could very well be.
Thank you, sir. Yes, would you like to approach again?
Yes, thank you. We are a mental health receiving facility. We receive Baker Acts and Marchman Acts at Thirty-eight-hundred West Flagler Street. So most of the time, our local police officers, whenever they have someone that needs immediate psychiatric evaluation for determination of dangers to self and others, is picked up and taken. And we are your closest receiving facility, and we have been certified for years.
But Banyan being well-known for that, what's to stop an officer when they know that there's a Banyan here in West Miami and they're across the street in City of West, West Miami, to not come to this facility?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Banyan is well, well-known for that excellent care that you provide as far as mental health and receiving Baker Act patients, correct?
At Thirty-eight-hundred West Flagler Street, yes.
And that's probably well-known throughout the, the police community, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if I have a police officer, let's say, in the City of Miami, which is across the street from Eighth Street, and they know that there is a Banyan facility here, they will not know that you, you're designating this facility as being different from all the others. So they will more than likely come here to this facility, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I understand your concern, and I will actually address it the following. I am one of the CIT trainers, Crisis Intervention Team trainers for the Police Department. I train them every other week under Habsikava. You're probably familiar with her. Every single police officer that we have trained, over six thousand police officers, knows my name, knows my location, knows our location as a Marchman Act receiving facility and a Baker Act receiving facility. And they actively utilize our services whenever they have to Baker Act or Marchman Act. I can understand that if we have Banyan as a primary care clinic, that may be a concern. And I don't believe the Police Department, that have gone through all this training, I will make the mistake of identifying Banyan Primary Care Clinic as a receiving facility for Baker Act and Marchman Act.
I don't believe that's gonna be your, the name of your, of your facility, according to the application. It's not gonna say Banyan Primary Care Facility, or am I wrong? So we don't really know what the name's gonna be at this point? For signage. When they have to put their name on their application as to what they're going to be called or known as?
Madam Mayor, if I may, here's a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Department.
Right, well, I'm getting there. These are just part of my questions.
Okay. The purpose of this hearing is whether or not you will accept the recommendation or reject the recommendation.
Absolutely, but there are questions I have that will get me to that, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Doctor. Boom, 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 boom. One moment, let me just refer to some notes I took here. Counsel, if you could approach. in your initial presentation, you alluded to the fact that our chief had provided incorrect facts?
No, so let me be clear. My view was that his comments were premised upon what I believe to be incorrect facts, and those were the need for additional police, the increase, the 400,000. And that was premised upon what I thought I heard, which was that the facility was going to be one where folks with mental health issues, psychiatric problems, drug rehabilitation. I don't believe I heard the chief mention primary care. I think his focus was on these other matters, which is not what the import of that facility is. And I don't, I suppose I don't agree that there would be any need for increased police.
Well, thank you, but I just want to make a personal comment that I take offense to anyone standing at my podium and saying that my chief of police was incorrect. Because I know he did his research, and I will take whatever he says.
Madam Chair-
Over anyone else that stands at the podium.
Madam Chair, I believe he said he did his homework. And I don't dispute that he did his homework on what Banyan has been. But I don't know if I were to ask him questions and make the presum-, ask him to presume it's a primary care facility, would he have the same opinion as to the additional need for policing costs?
I'm sure he based his information on his knowledge of police work, and you're basing yours on knowledge of health centers. So as I stated, I will always take what he says as truth and fact over anyone else that stands at the podium. I just want to make that personal clarification with you, because I know you alluded to the fact that he perhaps was mistaken. Okay, so with that said, a few other comments. Many times you've said the word intent, the intent of the facility, the intent of what's stated in the application. In my opinion, intentions are one thing, and actuality is completely different. So I'm not going to deal with intentions, but I'm going to deal with actuality. Actuality being, again, your reputation. The reputation that precedes you. And I know what you're saying is this is going to be a primary care health facility. But going to what's something that Ms. Millian brought up, what guarantee do I have that it says that in your contract with the federal government or any contract? What guarantee do I have going forward, once you open your doors, that that is all you will be? Is a primary care health facility?
Madam Chair, we would not make a presentation to you or anybody else in a governmental position and fly. It's not what we do.
I appreciate that.
And we haven't done it for 50 years, and we're not going to take any opportunity to do that.
So is it not written anywhere in your contract or documents that that is all you will ever be? At this location? I'm speaking of this location, not your others.
What I said is what we're going to be. I mean, I, every, I don't know if I can capture in a sentence, but what I represented to you is what we're going to be.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If I can just have a moment here, because I wrote a lot of things down, so give me one moment to be sure that I allow you the opportunity to answer all of my questions. Okay, so, some notes that I made to myself. Mr. Pena, Mr. Morgan also kept questioning our ordinance 282, and he stated that medical and dental is a permitted use, whereas I happen to know the opposite. So could you clarify that?
Medical and dental office, as stated on the 282, 73 uses allowed, is for a single doctor, his own office.
Okay.
Same thing for dentists.
And that's where the attorney said offices. Now I understand, okay. And Mr. Morgan, I know you presented this to me, thank you, your list of doctors, but since I am not privy to this actual special use, I'm sure they all had to come to us with a special use, so I do not know the parameters of any of these, I cannot speak to it or hold it as truth or fact because I do not know what their special use permit request was. So thank you for presenting it, but I really can't take this into consideration since I was not present during any of these hearings.
Okay.
But thank you for presenting it to me.
The representation was that these are C, they're not special use. It's part of the public record. And they're not simply an office. These are offices with multiple doctors.
Again, since I don't know that for a fact, I wasn't a part of any of these special use applicant requests. I thank you for presenting it, but I can't use it as part of my decision. But thank you for presenting it. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, we're not taking consideration other clinics or other facilities.
I understand, that's exactly what I'm saying.
We're just talking about this facility. I think that you should address just this issue and the two possibilities, either you approve or this approved the recommendation of the zoning board, period. Nothing else?
I'm going there, and that's why I thanked him for presenting it, but I can't use it. That's exactly where I was going. Okay, thank you, sir.
I mean, you may not take it into consideration, but you have to use it. I mean, it's before you.
Well, I just said how I was going to use it. I wasn't going to, because I can't. I'm not. Thank you. In my experience, the purpose of a special use permit is to see the intent of and appropriateness of the applicant and how it fits with our community. As Vice Mayor Suarez commented, we have a lot of providers, maybe not necessarily within our boundaries, but very close to us. Ms. Millian alluded to Nicholas Children's, which again is a world-class facility, and it's two minutes from us. So yes, it's not within our boundaries, but it's two minutes away. And I know that it is not mandatory, or are we obliged to approve something that is not in the code or permitted by the list? It seems to me that every aspect of your application is something that is not already unapproved use of the location. So with that said, I'm going to see if there's anything else that needs to be said here at the table. And I know that we're here to overturn or accept the recommendation of our Planning and Zoning Board, which I respect their time. I respect their professionalism when they look at every application. I know that they go about it in a very professional way and take everything into consideration. And I value their opinion of all our boards. I value the opinion of all our boards, which our boards are, as you know, made up of residents. So these are people who live here and care very much about our city, and I'm sure their decisions are based on that. So with that said, anything else?
Do I have to read what I read?
Let the Commissioner, one more.
I just want to make a brief comment. The City of West Miami is like a pediatric patient. You know, we're a very small city. We cannot absorb, you know, the kind of dose that is being presented here today. So based on everything I've heard and based on everything that was not answered adequately, I'm going to base my decision, so.
Okay. Commissioner?
I had a motion on the table already. I'm sorry, but-
Madam Mayor, we have a resolution that we must read for the record. Let's be, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, did you have anything else? Did you have anything else, Vice Mayor, before the clerk reads your resolution?
Yes, I'd like to express to this group, which is a business group, and they have good intentions to make their business grow. And they spend money to looking for locations and looking for places. But in my opinion, Mayor, they have, we have a lot dentists. I already told dental and personal individual offices, medical offices. But this is a big thing. This is an institution. Nine medical examination rooms, five dental service chairs, five mental health examination rooms, one psychiatry room, three medical and administrative offices. Also, they have a pharmacy. I'm pretty sure they have, and that pharmacy's special drugs for special treatment of mental patients. And in my opinion, I am not in the medical business. You are in the medical business, I am not. I was selected in this city to use the common good, the common sense for the common good. And I tried to make the best for our residents. And our residents wants to be a peace and tranquility in this city. And I think this institution really do not, is not the tranquility, the peace that our residents to want, to have a small city with small businesses and have a family-oriented life. It's my opinion. This is a big institution for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, item 11B, a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida for site plan approval of special use permit for Banyan Health Systems LLC 6400 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. Requirements for improvements to the existing building and land in the City of West Miami and in lieu of the rub, requiring certain improvements and other terms and conditions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I already make a motion to deny this application.
Thank you.
Well, that motion was premature. Would you please repeat it again, please?
Motion?
First of all, Madam, you have to close the hearing for the public and then go back to the table.
I already did, sir.
Okay, fine.
I left it prior to inviting the applicant back up for questions.
Yeah, apologize.
Okay, so I need a motion. Would you please restate your motion?
I make the motion to deny the application.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second?
Madam Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
On the motion, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, to deny the application. Commissioner Suarez? Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes, to deny. Keep the planning and zoning opinion.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
And I vote yes.
4-0.
You know, with abundance of caution, I would like to put it this way also. My understanding is that what you're doing is you're accepting or not accepting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board. What the intent is to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board, correct?
Right, yeah.
That is correct, sir. We are accepting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to deny the application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. 4-0. Item passes in favor of denying the application and accepting the recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Next item would be item 11C. This is a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Property address 143133 and 144143, Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 32144. Special use permit for plan development number 2019004. Applicant Elite Homes 14XX LLC. Applicant requests a special use permit for plan development of 253-foot lot previously submitted for a tentative plot for the property at 14XX Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 32144. The property is zoned for R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to build two-story duplex homes divided by a party wall on each lot parcel. The developer will construct two new two-family, two-story duplex. Parcel is zoned for R2 duplex, zoning ordinance 282, section 2B.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I hope no one minds, but, Mr. Pena, before you speak, may I call for a quick break?
Please.
My speak will be very quick.
Can you hold it?
Sure.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, thank you for reading that, but I'd like to call for a break at this time.
To blow my nose, it's coming out.
Meetings called back to order at 9:35. Madam Clerk, you read the item, and Mr. Pena, you were about to present to us. Please, continue.
Madam Mayor, the applicant is not present, so I would request that we continue it to January.
January 15th?
You could have told me that.
That's exactly what I meant to say, and you said, "No, you hold it."
Madam Mayor, he tried his defense.
He did try.
He did try.
He did try.
So if we could continue it to the first, second meeting in January 15?
Yes.
You need to open and close the public hearing, continuing it to January 15.
Open the public hearing. There's no one here to speak. Close the public hearing.
And are all in favor to continue this public hearing on January 15, 2020, 7:30?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next item?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to proceed with the rest of the items? Or would you like to follow the original order of the agenda?
Oh, we never did any of our reports. All right, let's go back to our reports.
So back to the original order of the agenda with the item 6, report to the City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. You have a written report dated today. It's in your pocket. The first item on my report is a movie night that Miami-Dade County Vice Chair Rebecca Sosa, District 6, and along with the mayor and City of West Miami City Commission, will be, we will be hosting or collaborating to host a movie night at Cooper Park on Friday, December 6. I know that the mayor had had conversations with the Commissioner regarding a movie night. So what we did is we prepared a flyer for your approval this evening, and we have also forwarded the same to the District 6 office for approval of the wording and the layout by both the City of West Miami Commission and Commissioner Chairwoman Sosa's office. So we need to have this by the printers, at the printers tomorrow at noon, because the printer will be closing the week of Thanksgiving. So if you like it and approve the wording, we can proceed with it. We will add the popcorn as suggested by Commissioner Blanes.
What do you mean, we're adding popcorn?
I thought a little yellow would look good. It would jump out a little more.
Oh, I thought you-
It's movie night.
Oh, but we're not serving popcorn?
Butter, butter popcorn.
Sure.
Yeah, and it's green because obviously it's the holiday season. And the Grinch, absolutely.
Yes, and Madam Manager, if I may, you are correct. I spoke to Vice Chairwoman Sosa many times on this, so I want to publicly thank her for sponsoring this and, you know, allowing us to co-sponsor it with her and for holding this in our city, because I have had a lot of residents that have asked about it.
Sure.
So I want to publicly thank her for doing this with us.
So we will be, thank you, we'll be delivering the flyers the week after next, early week, so that'll give us four or five days to notify the residents.
Okay.
The next item is our employee Thanksgiving luncheon is scheduled for Monday, November 25. We've calendered the event, and we trust that you can take some time from your busy schedule to have lunch with us. Lunch will be served at approximately 1:30. We have a 1:00 p.m. invite. The City of West Miami Community Center will be having their luncheon on Friday of this week, our senior citizens. I am advised by the Community Center Director Evelyn Mayo-Paz that the turkeys will be delivered by the city to all homebound clients tomorrow. Our committee chair, Commissioner Luciano Suarez, was able to secure all the turkeys for the congregate and home-delivered meal clients. for the congregate and home-delivered meal clients, so this is a tremendous contribution to our, to our seniors. And as a reminder, on Friday, the 22nd, starting at about 11:45 in the morning, we hope you can join us, we've also calendered this event, I believe Commissioner Suarez has invited the members of the Micasuki Tribe to attend the, the event, as they do every year, and they did donate all the turkeys.
Thank you.
The, as, as part of our Thanksgiving holiday calendar, this is a reminder that City Hall will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th, in observance of Thanksgiving. The Police Department will be open for business as customary 24/7 over the holidays, and there will be garbage collection on both days. And at this point, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish the mayor, the vice mayor, city commissioners, and every member of our city, both staff and employees and our residents a very blessed Thanksgiving holiday. Holiday patrols, I spoke to Deputy Chief Avila late this afternoon, and he has assured us that they will be implementing our, the holiday patrols that the chief and the deputy chief provide as extra protection to the residents of the city, starting on Thursday, December 5th, during peak hours for holiday shoppers, as we do on a yearly basis. These holiday patrols will be in effect until January 1st, 2020, I put here 2019, this is incredible, we're already looking at 2020. These patrol efforts will be devoted to the residential areas barring any unforeseen emergencies. The past Halloween, the first Halloween event, actually, my assistant prepared a memo with what we had in terms of a budget for the event, and we estimated initially a cost of $7,500, which is what we budgeted for this event. There were, we received $450 from two merchants, and those, those donations, as requested by the merchants, went to pay for candy. The city spent a total of $8,353 towards the event, so we were close, we were close to our projection and our, and our budget. Nonetheless, I think that we will need to incre- increase the budget for a total of $10,000 next year. So we have to keep this in mind as we go through next year's budget presentation. The next item in my report is the Miami-Dade County delegation, public hearing will be held on December 2nd, 2019, and that is before the Dade County delegation, where the delegation will be sitting to listen to every municipal legislative priority request. This is what they take back with them to Tallahassee. Our legislative consultants converge, will be at hand, Mario Bailey will be expecting Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez, who will be presenting before the delegation, we are advised that this, the presentation is, is a two-minute presentation, so Mayor will be working with you to assist you in, in presenting or summarizing the needs that we have in our priority, on the resolution of priority and, and needs.
Perfect, thank you.
The mayor suggested that, that, and has requested that we calendar our, our commissioners and invite them to join you at the Miami-Dade County School Board Building on Dec- December 2nd. The time certain will be announced probably in the coming week or so, so we'll have a better sense of time at that time. To add to my report.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What is December 2nd?
The Miami-Dade County delegation hearing.
The school board, what do you mean, the school?
It is at the School Board Building. The presentations, the school board has offered, I guess, their facility.
The ordinary building for Miami?
Yes, yes. We don't have a time certain for the presentation, but we'll know in the coming days as the agenda is prepared and municipalities confirmed. The next item on my report, which is not my report, but I would like for you to consider inclusion on it, is a memorandum by our Director of Public Works regarding an antique car show, and Mr. Penna, I've, I would encourage you to, to listen to his report at this time. It's a request, it's a request. I have mine, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, I am antique car enthusiast, I have a 1965 Thunderbird, fully restored, and I also belong to the classic Thunderbirds of South Florida Club, who meets in January at Tropical Park every year. However, this will be their last year after 20 years at their present location, because the county is building a building on the area that they use for the car show. So in conversations with the president, I suggested that we could do an event, smaller event at Cooper Park. They were looking to, to probably do it this year, however, in thinking about it and discussing with the other board members of the club show, they decided, or they would rather do the last one here at Tropical Park, so that they could also give future date and place to all the participants that join them at Tropical Park every year. They don't want to just disappear from that location and all of a sudden just show up here and wait till everybody filters over. So in anticipation, we're looking at January 24th, 2021, which is the fourth Sunday in the year 2021, January, to do it at Cooper Park. The, I put some pictures on the back of what they do in Lakeland, which would be a similar show to what we would want to place there. It's, will bring about 125 cars to the park, all parked nice and neat to display the different style of cars and the different ages of the cars.
Do, do you think we got room there for that?
Yes.
That's a nice show.
As long as we get to drive the cars.
You could be the valet to park them in place, yes. They also wanted to change the trophy, which is the, they always give a best-in-show at the park, so this year at Tropical Park, they will still do it there, but they're going to name that trophy the Mayor's Choice Award, and whichever car she chooses among the, all the participants this year will get the trophy named after the City of West Miami mayor.
No pressure.
That's putting a lot of pressure on me, don't you think?
That's up to you to decide which car. Obviously.
Do I need to know, like, do I need to know, like, engine size and?
No.
And horsepower?
You need to like what you're looking at.
That's it.
So a 1960, a 1965 maroon Thunderbird with a black top.
No, 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 don't, 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 don't.
Tag number.
Don't, no, 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 no preferential treatment here, don't, don't taint the dirt, no, 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 no.
So if you agree, I will let the board at the Thunderbird Club know so that they could make preparations for next year.
It would be for '21.
Yes.
That would be good. Gables people, they are going to like it, you from Gables.
We have all kinds of followers, and we have all kinds of antiques.
I know.
I think that this is a great way to showcase our park and perhaps bring a lot of future rental requests, because once all these people see our park and realize how beautiful it is and how simply located we are, it could bring about additional rental requests, so as long as you know that they'll, that they'll fit there, Mr. Penna?
This is a nice show. I think Mr. Bielobo have an antique car, right, you have an antique car?
Yes, I do.
Close.
What else are we going to have? Maybe we have the food trucks, too.
They, they provide their own food vendors.
This requires, this requires no work on our staff?
The only thing that we will charge them for is, again, the use of the park, police, and the permit fee that the city decides.
Cleaner.
So we will, now would they be hiring police on an off-duty basis?
Yes.
So it's like a regular rental?
That's correct.
Is handled, we have nothing to do with it as far as setup, they pay the rental fee, they pay the off-duty police fee, and they pay the cleanup fee, all part of the rental agreement.
You're a guest.
Yes, yes, yes.
I like the idea.
And, and Mr. Penna, these cars obviously parked just for that one day, are not going to, are not going to?
They're, they're, they're.
Damage or?
Some are, some are towed in, some are, are brought in, driven, and they stop there and they stay there for the rest of the day, and then they leave at the end of the show.
Perfect, okay, I, I love the idea, I think it's a great way to showcase our city and our, our park.
I think you have an antique Jeep, right, you have a Jeep?
I don't have it, I do not have my Jeep any longer, thanks to my husband's choice in selling it, but he upgraded me to what I have now, so I can't complain. And the antique car we did have, we, we no longer have, but anyway, I'm in agreement with it, and?
Me three.
Okay?
Me four.
All right, you have our blessing, Mr. Penna.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, is that?
Madam Consil.
All for your report?
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor, if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you very much, Yolanda.
I do not.
We've got five minutes.
Okay, next, Madam Clerk?
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Four scores and seven years.
Thank you, sir, next, next, Madam Clerk?
Item eight, report of the city engineers, non this evening. Item nine, committee, committee reports.
I, in the interest of time, I have nothing tonight.
Another committee?
Oh, you do, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. In light of the upcoming regular city committee meetings, upcoming cancellation, it is my recommendation that we, that we cancel December 4th, December 4th meeting, and schedule for December 18th, 2019, regular meeting. This way, there will be, there will not be such a gap of almost 45 days without a, without a meeting. At this time, I make a motion for consideration on this matter.
Okay, so let me understand, just.
I think it's the opposite. We always cancel the meeting by Christmas.
No, we do, but what, what Commissioner's asking now is that we switch it back around, is that clear, is that what I'm understanding?
So it won't be so many days.
You want to have the meeting on the 4th, no.
Oh, no.
You want to cancel the 4th and have it on the 18th.
That's correct. This way, it won't be so many days without a meeting. It was, we can like 45 days without a meeting.
But we have meeting the, the beginning of January.
We don't, we have, January 1st is New Year's Day, so it's canceled.
Okay, then we have January 15th?
15th, correct.
It's more than 45 days without a meeting.
What is your problem with that? Christmas time.
There's a motion on the table. There's a motion on the table.
This is a discussion, this is the, the discussion, okay, so Commissioner, Vice Mayor, you're saying, what are you saying?
I know, I don't have to see the day, because by Christmas time, it's always a complication.
December 19th is not Christmas yet.
It's very close to Christmas.
It's a week before.
Okay, Mr. Blanes, your thoughts, do you have any?
No.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so, Madam Manager, your thoughts, your? No thoughts, okay?
No thoughts, I'm not going to be here the week of December 4th, I've designated an acting city manager, I'm sure that Mrs. Leon is not going to be able to attend the commission meeting in the evening, but the clerk is here, Mr. Penna, the chief, the deputy, so it's all up to you, if you want to have your meeting on the 4th, and that's your preference, if you want to have it on the 18th, I will be back, and hopefully, everybody will be here, Mr. Penna, our clerk, and our police administrator.
What is required of us?
One regular meeting per month.
Okay.
The concern that Commissioner Blanca expressed to me this morning in the office when she came in, is that we may have to bring some items to the commission regarding ban, bank signatures and all that because of some changes that we are expecting at the end of December.
Okay.
So the commissioner told me, she said, wouldn't it be better if we could have, instead of breaking the first meeting in December, breaking the second, I, I mean, going back to the, reverse the schedule, basically, have a meeting on the 18th and cancel the 4th.
May I, may I, may I?
Well, let's, are you, is that it, are you done, Madam Manager? Okay, then yes, what?
Let me, let me explain you, Madam Mayor, and Madam Manager.
Oh, I'm only asking a question, no?
I think we should cancel December 4th, because it's the, it's the day they kick off party.
No, that's December 5th.
No, December 4th.
No, it's, he's right, it's December 4th.
It's the 4th.
It is December 4th, well, that's what, that is what Commissioner Blanca wants to do.
I agree.
Now you're agreeing, now that you checked your social calendar, see, now that he checked his social, because he was, he was not in agreement with this before, but now that he checked his social calendar, he is in complete agreement, okay, so, so, in my turn, so, based on that, now that you've checked your social calendar, you've changed your, 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 your outlook. Commissioner Blan, it doesn't matter to Commissioner Blan, it's one way or the other, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other, as long as we comply with our one meeting a month. Our manager is not going to be here on the 4th, and I believe you just stated that Mrs. Leon possibly wouldn't be able to be here on the 4th. I don't know if we have any very pressing things that you are aware of that are coming up?
I may have some pressing matters involving commission action.
Can they wait until the 18th, is my question?
We need to wait until the 18th, actually, because some things need to be laid out.
Now, Madam Clerk, do you foresee, do you have anything on your radar that cannot wait until the 18th? Okay, well then, all in favor of?
Cancel 4th.
Canceling the 4th and having, and, and having the meeting on the 18th, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, done. I'm glad you checked your social calendar, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, because I have a person to meet and?
I'm glad he checked his social calendar, that was very important. Okay, next item?
Next item would be item 11.
Where you started?
I put it on my calendar.
11F.
Remind me, before I leave here tonight, somebody remind me before I leave here tonight to change my calendar, okay, go.
We will recalender everyone tomorrow.
Thank you, okay, go, next.
Yes, item 11F, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami waiving the competitive bid provisions of Florida statutes and City of West Miami code, authorizing the city manager an expenditure for the purpose of performing lining repairs to the sanitary sewer due to leaks found on Southwest 67th Avenue from 16th Street to Southwest 22nd Street, providing for a cap of $13,000 payable to Enviro Waste Services Group, Inc., for the purpose of accomplishing the sectional liner installation of certain sections of the sewer line on Southwest 67th Avenue from 16th Street to Southwest 22nd Street. 22nd Street set funds shall be borne from account 580237, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Penna, why are you always asking for money? Go right ahead, state your case, please, sir. State your case, sir.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, that is my job.
Yes, I realize that.
The section of sewer line that we're speaking about is below the water table, it is on Southwest 67th Avenue, which is a heavily trafficked road, so at present time, rainwater drains into the sewer line and we pay for it through our meter to Wassa. Part of the consent decree is that any leaks like that need to be repaired. Slip lining the PVC line with this material will seal the leaks and put the sewer system back in compliance.
Got to get done, right?
Yes.
Sounds like the cost of doing business.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami waiving the competitive bid provisions of Florida statutes and City of West Miami code, authorizing the city manager an expenditure for the purpose of correcting and repairing a water line where leaks have been found and conventional methods of repair cannot be used to light oak trees in the path of repair, in the path of repair work, providing for an amount of $14,094 payable to RNY Underground, Inc., for the purpose of accomplishing the installation of plastics, plastic sections of water services lines on 66 Court from 16th Street to Southwest 18th Street from account 533237, providing for an effective date.
Oh, wait, Mr. Penna, don't, what does one have to do with the other, is this the same thing?
No, these are two. No, these are two separate things, this is a, the water lines, the service lines that we have going to feed the different houses on those blocks. Uh, both, uh, leaks that have been identified are under, uh, two oak trees that are close to thirty-eight inches in diameter. And, uh, you can't cut the tree down to repair the line, so we need to go around them with a new line.
So this has nothing to do with the liner that we just talked about?
No, this is for a water line.
Putting, putting, what, PVC pipes?
New...
Around the tree?
Yes, it's new plastic pipe, it's not PVC.
So, I have a question. In this case, that the line is already there, it's a tree. They plant the tree, they didn't realize was a water line under, under the tree.
Correct.
And now, there's a problem in the line, and, uh, we cannot cut the tree, we cannot remove the tree in order to repair the line?
It's a protected species.
So we have to go?
Around it, and abandon the section that goes through the tree.
Like a fence in the second, in the sixth, the second avenue, remember?
Yes.
The sidewalk, the tree?
Correct.
Now the tree is up here, but they're already gang, and the sidewalk is around.
Correct, this is an oak tree, though, this, it's a very nice oak.
Is there a way to wave or something and, and, and do this? And remove the tree and, and fix the line?
No, it's a humongous tree.
Motion.
So we could have these issues in other parts of the city, right?
Correct, this was identified through the water leak study.
Okay, we need, Mr. Penna, we need to start looking into mitigating some of these tree issues, I'm just saying for the record. Down the road, we need to...
Again, these are on private property, these easements are still private property, and they're, per our ordinance, they're allowed to grow in private property.
But the tree is...
In the easement.
This tree is in private property?
Yes.
And the water line?
It goes through private property, through the easement.
But you vision the, in the private property, the owner of property has to fix it, no?
No, no, it's our water line, our water line to service their homes.
I understand that.
The tree is theirs, the water line is ours.
It's a main, it's not a service line.
No, but my question is, the line, the water line belongs to the city.
That's correct.
And the tree on top of the line belongs to the owner of the house.
That's correct.
It's a conflict. We cannot remove the oak because the owner of the house doesn't want it, or because they're, do not allow it.
It's a protected tree.
Why?
Because of the size of the oak. You could, you could remove it, but you would have to mitigate the cost of it somewhere else.
So this is a cheaper way?
Yes.
This is a cheaper way, okay?
Yes.
Wait, before, before the motion, Mr. Attorney, I, I just want to... The waiving the competitive bid provision, you, you looked at this, and that's fine, right? Waiving the competitive bid provision, very well, okay?
I have a question, if I may, Madam Mayor, before you vote on this issue?
Hold that motion, sir, hold that motion.
Can, can the county, the R E R department assist us with the tree removal, even if it's on private property? Because it's damaging the utility?
There's no way they're gonna...
Yeah.
No, I...
There's no funding there.
And there is nothing that we have from an enforcement standpoint um, that we can ask the neighbor to remove the tree so that we can at least try to mitigate this from happening again?
Again, I, I, I state that the, the, the water line is an easement.
I understand that, the trees are...
I would, I would, I would, I would beg to... It would be difficult to locate the actual paperwork for that easement.
Yeah, yeah, I have a question, I have another question. Penna, when you may go around, you make a, a new line parallel at the old line, right?
We go under it.
Under it, you bypassed it.
We stay in the easement, we go under it, deeper.
You're going under the tree?
Yes.
Not around it?
No, deeper.
Oh, well, if we cannot put a parallel line...
Because we, if we, if we go around it, we, we get out of the easement, we have to go under it to stay in the easement.
Okay.
There's the cheapest way to go under it?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to fix it, we have to fix it.
Okay, um, I, there's a motion on the table, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before we go on to the next one, Madam Manager, Mr. Penna, I do want to sit with you all sometime after the holidays, and start talking about these tree issues and problems and stuff like that, so plan a tree meeting.
In the, in the right place.
I know we're Tree City USA, and I want to continually comply with that and continue in that way, but I want to talk about, you know, ways to mitigate these tree problems that are coming up. So, you know, rest of the year, let's talk about it, thank you, okay? Next item.
Item eleven H, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami waiving the competitive bid provisions of Florida statutes and city of West Miami code, authorizing the city manager an expenditure for the purpose of replacing and installing a controller for the lift station number four, providing for a cap of four thousand dollars payable to Hydor Services, Service, Inc. in connection to said installation, providing for an effective date.
As you're aware, we spent over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars retrofitting lift station number four with new pumps, new piping, uh, new panel, control panel. This is the actual unit that operates the alarms and the heights of the station in order to maintain the station in operation.
Had nothing to do with a hundred and twenty thousand we already spent?
No, that was repairing other items.
Okay.
Is there one issue by the rec?
That's the one at the rec.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big, it's a big pump there, and a big...
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, the waiving the competitive bid provisions, you've...
That is correct, it was represented, that, uh, the, uh, the, the, the issue is that it would be very expensive to go out to, uh, number one, a bid, and number two, uh, I understand that the people are going to do that work, it's, uh, the same that, uh, they're doing the, have done the other, uh, work, is that correct, then, Mr. Penna?
That's correct.
So, uh, they have the work with all, they have the, uh, equipment, they have uh, similar redundant, uh, parts and so on and so forth, so it is, uh, correct.
That's all I need to know, that you've reviewed it, passes muster with you, I have a, uh, motion, I have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item eleven, aye, report by Director of Public Works in reference to condition of the city's backhoe and possible need to replace in lieu of repair.
Really, Mr. Penna?
More money.
I'm glad we're sitting down for this, the end of this agenda.
The manager will be my witness, I've asked for a backhoe in the past five, uh, years, so...
Okay, go.
We just keep pushing that can down the line.
Okay.
The backhoe...
You've got a really big can you've been pushing for a while, all these things are in that same can, aren't they?
We're a dull city.
Yeah, well, the, the, the equipment is getting old.
Go ahead.
The present backhoe is thirty years old. Uh, we got it in nineteen eighty-nine, it's gone through who knows how many hurricanes. And, uh, at present time, it's at the dealer, a gross Ford, because it needs, uh, brakes. Uh, to do a brake job on a backhoe is six thousand dollars. That's a lot of money to put into a thirty-year-old unit with no guarantees of what next will break. Uh, a new unit runs in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. We are looking at financing options at this time. So I guess we will come back at the eighteenth meeting, and if we have something more short up at that point.
So we've got our money out of that thirty-year-old piece of equipment, and then some?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, that being said, Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, when the next budget cycle comes around, I think we need to start looking at equipment, age. We are keeping up with police vehicles as best as we can, but we're getting close with our trash truck, with our garbage truck, and it seems to me, or to us, that by the time you get done with paying these big, large equipment off, that we need to start thinking about funding future oper- um, replacement costs.
Let's proactively look at it at the time of the budget, so we can budget based on age, so we, we, Mr. Penna now pretty much knows, you know, what the life expectancy is of, of this equipment, so...
And how much money we throw into the maintenance costs?
At budget time, I agree.
We have to put those, uh, those issues into perspective.
I agree.
And in the meantime, just for the record, we have rented, uh, a unit, um, and we're going to keep it until thirty days, a minimum of thirty days. That should give us time to look at our financing options.
Very well. Um, next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item twelve, consent agenda items, uh, we need a motion, second of vote.
I need a motion. You need a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, good of the order.
Good of the order.
Do I have anybody for anything for the good of the order? Okay, as stated by Madam Manager in her report, I want to wish everyone, all our residents, my, my colleagues, staff, employees, um, everyone a happy, happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ma'am.
Be safe, eat and drink well, um, and, um, enjoy, enjoy your holiday, as it should be. A what? My calendar, uh, meeting is adjourned. I'm fixing it right now.